And puppy activists not telling them the truth because he don't think nothing. I can't do so know so much and you not even behind the scenes nor been in the office. Me, Scott, Jackie, Josh, friends, we used to help the American when we didn't like it. I could have worn a better shirt though. I just got some workout. This is the time I work out and unfortunately I come with my tank. It's okay. I mean, I work out at this time. I work out in the morning. I work out in the afternoon. What initiation is this? Which one? You challenge five? You don't want to, you don't want to get involved? You don't? Okay, we want you to add.
I'm the reporter, yes.
Okay, you want to get in, bro? I'm going to be a city councilman. I'm the former vice president. Do not know what they should do, what they not do. I'm just so tired of all the media is giving this misinformation. My book will be out next month. My books come out.
I hear you everything, but it's on three different sides. It's going to wait till the news over.
So on the one side, one side is they made important jobs. Y'all just know that. They should have a bunch because they can play.
It's only going to wait till the news over.
Now, what do you want me to do about it though from all that I just told you? I'm allowed you to, I'm allowed you to do the narrative. Who do you think?
We're talking about both sides, both side of five.
My name is Mr. Montrez Davis, W A N T as in Tom, W A D as in Z, A D D A D. What I feel about the budget, the budget is a balanced budget, but the problem is, is the budget is balanced based on a budget. It's a reserve that every municipality has to manage the budget. Now, do I agree with certain ideas in the budget? No, I do not. But also, the budget, not in the state's budget. The city council must have a job. Not a part job. It's budgetary processing. We should never get to the point where we are right now where we struggling to get ahead. Because they have already violated the charter and not passed the budget. So they in violation already. And we shouldn't be in this. What city council should have done is got a copy from the mayor, which they should have. And conduct the budget of their own, contract this budget and display it to the residents, allow the residents to own it. That budget to see if that budget is beneficial for the services of the city. And that is one of my biggest issues. The city council number one job is budgetary processing. And although they may not like the mayor budget, which I don't really either, they should have a budget in place too to counteract this budget. Because right now, it just seem like it's just a bunch of campaigns, a bunch of equipment. But it's at the cost and the expense of the services of the city that needs to be paid and the people who jobs that may be laying off July 1st. They claim they're going to work and try to get this budget done, but during the meantime, they should already have a budget already prepared. Now, the chaos and the confusion that I see going on in this meeting is all stems from heated emotions that people desire to see them changing. But a lot of time, these heated emotions comes from political activists that has a personal agenda on their own. And mislead the people to believe that one side is one way and other side is the other when they work as a body. Six counties that works as a body. And the biggest voice that we could ever had is not by the structure, is not by fight, is not by creating bodies. Your voice is heard at the voting vote. So no matter what goes on on the arm and the fight, if we spread the message. The way that we express ourselves in our voices in a productive manner, and the best productive manner is at the elective party. We vote who we want in, we vote who we want out. Because violence has never got us nowhere, but it gets more violent. And it creates a dysfunctional democracy. And the whole world is looking at City of Flint, Michigan and has had their eyes on the City of Flint, Michigan since the Flint water crisis. And it looks bad all across other municipalities, other cities, other states. And to me, I am extremely disappointed on the way that this destruction and this violence and this non-productive meetings has been going because the eyes is on thing and it don't look good. Our voice doesn't have to be heard through violence. It does not have to be heard through insurrections. It can be heard when we go to the polls. We vote who we want in, we vote who we don't want in. And we have a better democracy. We have a better leadership in the legislative body. Until then, we have the biblical impact. And waited until 2026 and vote out who we don't want in. But insurrections, violence, destruction, it's all nonsense. And it doesn't make the City of Flint, Michigan look in a productive manner. It looks so unprofessional.
What's up with you, man? I mean, sure.
He trying to get back in. You said it right. It's over, puppy.
To see us this way with one another because we understood that we was a body, we wasn't a single elected official. So our house survived and we never stayed. And when it was time, we would come together to represent the people, and especially in particular, to get the services of the city paid. We always stood together as one with the God in our heart. And that's what we did when I was in office. We never went past the deadline, past the budget. And we never allowed a dysfunction legislative body to become official.
How you doing, Mr. Man?
We dug ourselves in the best of our best. Be honest, when I was in office, we was at the first time.
Well, I didn't lie there. I didn't lie there. I didn't lie there.
Hey, for sure. This is insurrectionist.
Is we made our voices heard at the voting vote. Because no matter what goes on in fighting with each other, creating insurrection, it makes no change. The change can only be made when you go to the voting polls and vote for the right person that you think that has your best interests.
I've been following that show again, but she tell you what you want to come. She ain't been doing nothing. All right. I ain't gonna keep getting dog out like you. You put my foot down. I'm messing with you. It's press conference. It's press conference. No, you gotta do it right first. Cause this is my foot lying there down here. You'd say it was hotel. It was press conference. You gotta give it something. You even got, you even got to let them people know.
What's that little roach on hole back? My motherfucker's really going to get up under there.
Where they got a string, they know where you gonna do that.
They thought they had it. They trying to do that. Niggas cut lips up there on their ass. Yeah.
That's who bringing that rear back up.
So that's why I got this one. I just came back from the O C school. Oh, okay. I just came back from the O C school.
I made the suggestion that they make Flint, Michigan back to the city, get the law order, underground, shrink the ex-convict brothers off the street. And let's get them to work. When you living in a market, you need to leave. Morals go down, values go down because our economy has fallen. I grew up in America when our economy was one of the major business countries in America. We didn't see what it's been there because we had a strong economy. We have a weak economy. It plays with the constitution of the way that the younger generation think. We need to get these orange shit and people off the street to get them to work. It heightens the morals and heightens the values. And that's when I convinced the change of commerce. And in 2017, a month before I got out of office, they made grand regular news that they was going to be illiterate. Put it in my board, we teach that word on the beauty side. April 2018 is when they had a vote in the American.
She ain't going to make me, man. She over here. Y'all see how I'm getting harassed? She trying to, how you doing today, Michelle? Michael, how you doing? You definitely want me to say that?
My name is Michelle.
Michelle, how you doing? I'm just messing with you. Ann, that's right. How you doing, Mike? They taking our freedom away. They taking our freedom away. Cause it's a new meeting. You see this now. We didn't have this section that far. Yeah, this, you been gone. Man, this ain't been like this. They just didn't do like this.
Oh, oh, they put chairs out there. Oh, y'all can't stand up no more.
Yeah, okay. And then, then they hit the other chairs that they had over there.
They knew, yeah, they want to move the backs on them. That's why they moved their chairs right here.
Yeah, they like.
Oh, they done gave them some black chairs back there, huh? Oh, they see a better chairs. They not gonna even show all that. What is, what is, what is that? They gonna send all the people to cut out.
In our, in our fudge, in our fudge. But that's how our budget is balanced. Because it balances. Now, if council don't like the budget that the mayor gives, which I don't either, then councilmen, their responsibility is to conduct the budget themselves.
Let me see what I got. I'm finna see what I got now. You just tried to bully me. I'm gonna let you go and get this because you just bullied me. You just, let me plug it in over here. Let me see the back piece. That ain't working.
They'll come. They gonna give him two seconds or two minutes. He didn't, uh, campaign.
He over there, he over there talking to we the people. He finna get a real one with that one. Wantez getting interviews wherever he can get them from right now. Yeah. Boy, he saying the balance ain't his budget because he got the front balance. He don't even know how much money in the front balance. He said he going back when he was in office and his book coming out. I wanted to tell him, Wantez, don't nobody care about your book. But I don't want to be petty for that. Stanley Wood. He in the front. I, I don't want to knock his whistle. Wantez, he was carrying more tears. And I, that lyric, I was damn if I'm gonna pack up and bounce. I swear. I was about to pack up and bounce. It's a fun balance. They don't even know what's in the balance. Saying like they ain't presenting him with a budget. I'm, that's Wantez finally.
At 11:00 local, if you have anyone, um, who's starting the meeting. Thank you for having us here in the morning. This is the roll call. Mr. President.
We'd like to take a moment to recognize anyone who has passed on. Are there anyone, is there anyone you would like to share?
No, I share. I would like to, um, be alongside us for the Perkins family, the laws of the patriarchal. Yes, I said I would like to be alongside us for the Perkins family, um, and out of the patriarchal laws, which is that's the way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? I see, I believe whoever you are, you are a junior. You will. Thank you. Um, I would like everybody to please, um, silence their phones for our council votes and also if you are on the phone, please do not have it on right now. Thank you.
Please draw my heart and spirit. Loving, gracious God, you called us to a time such as this. You just called me God. Let us mend our hearts and let us comfort those who need comfort in this moment. But God, let us be uncomfortable to those who need to be uncomfortable. Let us foot tables when tables need to be footed, God. But not let us just foot tables, God, but let us be discerning in ways that we can rebuild and come together as a community. Because you have called, named, and ordained us at times such as these, God, because you know that this city is not in a cycle of death. We are in a cycle of resurrection, God. So show us in this moment, God, and be with blessed. God bless everyone in this room. My greatness is in the mighty name of the holy name of the high and of the great. And that is the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Any person that is disrupting a meeting will be in violation of Flint City, Section 110, disorderly conduct, assault and aderent, and disorderly persons and will be subject to arrest for this meeting. Any person who presents peaceful and orderly conduct at any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting a meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Five hundred years will be removed from their meetings. Rules. Rule 29.8, any person at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any council member alleging to speak your name for vulgarity or for speaking in excess of the allotted time or any other violation of these rules. Rule 29.9, any person who is called to order shall yield the floor until the chair shall have determined whether he or she is in order. If the person is chosen to be out of order, that person must yield the floor and report that any remaining time. Ben, or is there any other? First speaker is Renee Anderson.
My name is Renee Anderson. I'm here once again, trying to get answers. My son, Cuban Sykes, was killed. May 29th, 2022, downtown Flint, when there was a thousand people down there that was memorial that began. They found a hundred bullet cases. And we ought to think about that. A hundred bullet cases? I want to know why. I have a lawyer, and that's why that the Flint Police Force refused to release the footage, the cop cam, the forensic of that bullet, and their files to my lawyer for three years. We haven't gotten yet. They just released me an autopsy from three years, February 19th. I want answers. I want to know why. What is going on that I can't get no answers concerning to my son? I want to know why they held my granddaughter in the police car from eleven something at nighttime to four o'clock in the morning and would not let my daughter go up to their car. She was a minor. I want to know why they stopped my son from putting pressure on his brother's head because the blood was coming out so fast. They told me get the F of away from him. I want to know why they had guns poured on my son and surrounded him about six or seven police officers. I didn't even answer. And I want to answer to each of one of you city council members. I'd like to hear what y'all got to say about this because something truly is not right. It is not right. For them to hold an autopsy for three years for that. But they, but they stop people getting autopsy for. Why won't they release them files and footage and the cop cam and the forensic of that bullets to my lawyer? So I asked the autopsy people, well, who do I get, uh, the forensic of the bullet from? They said the Flint Police Department. I'm suing them for negligence about my son. That's what I'm suing. The Flint Police Force for negligence about my son. And they won't release anything. And they won't release anything. March 2025, we sent a letter to the Flint Sheriff's Department to have my lawyers come in and let them see the files, let them see the footage. March 2025, this is June. We have not heard anything from the Sheriff's Department yet. Now, I'm asking, I'm looking for some answers now. Somebody can tell me something. Tell me something, like I told y'all last time, I will be the speaker of the bill, get the way. I will be the speaker of the bill. My son not here no more. I am his boss, and I will be down here all the time above my baby until somebody gives me some type of answers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rich Jones.
Come on, Rich.
How y'all doing today? Today, I'm on a mission. Uh, got caught up in a situation to where, uh, put my, put my name on the line for doing this kid like a matter of March. I'd like to be a man to keep my word. So what I did is, uh, because, uh, I promised every kid a T-shirt. And, uh, what happened is, uh, I got more kids than I got people that's not willing to send a dollar, just a key with a dollar. So what I did is, uh, I downed steam, eliminated the police escort, so we could still march without a police escort, just came to be in the street. And, uh, bought her an $800 tank, because no matter what the weather's going to be, that tank is going to be wet or whether it's going to be hot or rain, never can tell. So I eliminated those three guys, because the goal for, for giving all the kids a free T-shirt, for some of it's going to happen. Now, many missed opportunities have came up here because y'all want to speak up and do the right thing. One of the things y'all are crying right now about not helping these people with rules and stuff. Eric May died with 800 requests, legal requests, in his hand. That was in his hand before you spent a dime on any one of your nonprofits. But because the city don't stand behind people because of people, instead of standing with people because it was best for the people, another situation that came about before the hydrosons was still. You had a chance to stabilize the water supply and zero vaccines, everybody acquitted. I mean, uh, water bills. Didn't stand with the people then. Had an opportunity. I'm not going to say any names, but one of y'all was telling my support people that I didn't know I was talking about. One of y'all was too good to even donate a T-shirt, I'm giving it a dollar. Just giving it a dollar. Y'all got to stop putting the wrong piece first, first, and do what's best for the people. And y'all can behave on me, y'all can behave on me once a month, because I love Flint, and I got a whole lot of ideas. I'm off to be going from park to park, doing order, 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 order. Capital U, capital C, capital L, capital O.
Take your time, son.
Give me a second. Capital T, capital U, capital T, capital L, capital O, that's the cash, y'all. Thank you, miss.
Next speaker is Ariel Mitchell.
Hi, Ariel. Hello, Ariel.
Hey, I'm named Ariel. I was supposed to come here by the doctor's desk, I don't know where that comes from. Yeah, I do know where that comes from, over there hanging out with the motorcycle club, treating them at the property. And know what? It's a useless prospect, sir. From the Eagle Club over to the subway, right on the corner, where them kids gonna have that project where this big drone fucker, Saturday, my T-shirt, he got us up in the vine, and they're all running for them kids like they're dying for. About two days later, they're down there right now. They came homeless, but the state stepped in because Mr. Lilly will make sure they ain't come homeless. That's what the mayor's saying, if you don't know who Mr. Lilly is. And if not, then let the kids speak for themselves, let us speak for them. Now, but what I say, now listen, I'm here to talk for this budget, to you, Mr. Diddy, to the 94th councilman, the doctor, the doctor, because he can't get his name right, or something. Man, you know what? When you first came along, there's that woman sitting in your seat, this school teacher, my daddy had just fifty dozen died. Well, my woman about to get before him, he was ninety-six, my mama was, remember my dad was, my mama was ninety-one, but anyway, I put it in the ground, because she put my daddy house on the market, and then tried to sell it. And I just, I was amazed about it, amazed.
Who was that? I said, did you know that?
He went, he got, he took the back off the market, and then you know, we got rid of them. She said, I don't like the way my students don't like the way them people down at City Hall talk. But let go, and she talked like Rick Jones, talked like she said the wrong thing, the kids was, the kids got the hell, they don't like this. But I want you to, I want you to know, on June the 18th, that's when schools opened, I was, I don't, this, I got a letter in the mailbox, I said, I got my phone number listed, two eight oh, two three five, I, I remember sixty-seven years old, still living in my daddy's mama's house. Michigan State put it in there, because I got a book on it, and they said, where you been, sir? Went up with it. That phone still picked up with me at nine thirty on June 18th. Looked like a museum of my mama's daddy, but, up to just like a mother. They already deep, I'm twelve years old, I done it, I just done it. And then they said, I'm not talking, I'm the limited, they said, you will not live and get your social security, brother, but that Trump and Clinton stuff, that's what all their records are needed with, the book is in here. The dude's about sixteen-year-old, right, standing, go home with his gun, and the dude got, what, what's his name, oh, oh, got, oh, dude, and it's one of them, and they said, okay, because they too, he want to help me, he's going to.
Next speaker is Tanya Jones. Tanya Jones.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Reverend Matthew Holzmann.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Matthew Holzmann. And I serve as the pastor of People's Church of Flintland here, before you get it twisted, because my calling, because the people of God have entrusted my care with the elders, with fixed incomes, the single mothers starting to make ends meet, the young people wondering if they're going to survive, the gun violence epidemic, and what the summer, and I watched the mayor's recent press conference with great interest and I meant some concern, and I must also be honest, some of us have concerns about the concerned pastors, because while the work is necessary, in past seasons, there's a new generation of clergy rising in Flint, and we've been anointed for such a time as this, and we must say that we don't want their seats, but we demand a place. Some of us are in the neighborhoods, not in the news, and we have the city, and we want to let our voices out in this moment, and it's funny, none of us got invited to discuss what he says.
Say that, Richard.
For this is about more than who got invited to a podium in my administration, this is about the soul of the city, which should have been pressed in that meeting. Flint needs a moral budget, not a balance fund. A budget that serves the whole city, not just the downtown corridor or special interests. A budget that supports the health, pastors and councilmen, yes, for mental health care, yes, to be broke brands, and jobs that pay a living wage, and a budget that makes it easier to live in Flint, not to move on.
Right now.
And I'm here not to take sides in y'all's political fights, I'm not here to tear down elders who work pain in the way, but I need to say, a new wave of clergy is rising, and we won't be silent. We are all of us, we are here in the call of this entire council, and this administration to govern for all of Flint, not just the loudest voices or the best connected pulpits, and if we get taken over by the state again, it's not because we have no willingness to govern, it's because everyone in the administration and the council won't listen to the people and rather listen to the cops.
Man, and God has spoken.
Next speaker is Juan Franz Davis.
It's funny, but the thing is, like I say always, I say always, because I'm not here to spike nobody, but what I want to say is this, City Council job is budgetary processing. And when we come through this door, this should have been a budget that City Council put together, so that we could have ruled and made it ourselves, but you guys have talked just to the budget. You claim, Tanya, we're on the fluke, that you just got the lying items on the budget. You guys been having budget, that's how you were able to say that you was four hundred dollars in debt. You been having budget, or you at least had some budget, and we're going to detect some things, I'll put some things in, you know, fashion a budget so that the residents can be able to see the budget and say, this is the budget that we want, because the services that has been paid has been paid for us. I know I said the council work, I'm the former vice president of the City Council, I understand the budget here, I said, right? And it is your job, your budget, but you guys spend so much time, each and every one of you, spend so much time arguing over a budget, talking about, you may get an emergency manager, under what fucking that? Under what fucking that? Under that four, under that four thirty-six, or they only can other under that. Because in order to get an emergency manager, we have to be between twelve, fourteen million dollars in debt, already in the general fund, and you have to give the governor the understanding of giving us a new financial emergency manager. Right now, we not even in debt. Now, if this budget passed, any budget passed, and I'm not here to support no budget, but the budget I am here to support is a budget that is beneficial for the people. That's the budget I'm here to support. And if you don't like the budget that the mayor submitted, you guys should have had a budget together that kind of like the budget that the mayor put together, so that it makes sense. You can't argue with no fruit. A tree is owned by the fruit, that there is a dust party, you guys are not producing no fruit. You produce no fruit. Y'all spent eight years, from 2017 to 2025, some of y'all have been up there for all forty years to cite each other. Counting, that's it. What he ain't doing, what she ain't doing, and then what that does, that translates out to the public, and the public says, they don't respect each other, we might not respect them either, and before you know it, we get a dysfunctional democracy, a dysfunctional legislative body, a dysfunctional city, the water crisis is gone, and all the glory. Y'all was looked at as a circus. I'm not saying, no, literally, I'm not saying, I'm saying the minds of the people that was pretty concerned about us, and I would say, they don't look at us no more, say, oh, the city of Flint boys, they look at us as dysfunctional. They look at us as dysfunctional. You guys should have a budget sitting at the table right now, when we walk in, allowing us to go home with that budget, to look at that budget, say, this is the budget. No, if they don't like the mayor budget, City Council job is budgetary processing. The mayor job is making a comprehensive plan and conducting the budget, but if you don't like that budget, we don't have to stand on that, make you one. Let's present it to us, produce fruit, let us see your fruit.
Next speaker is Sheris McFadden.
Everybody, Sheris, look, McFadden, you know, speaking on behalf of, I live on Miami Lane, I have a light problem. They cut the field right nearby Big Park, at Canif, in Miami, we have a big beautiful park right there, they cut the field at the corner, but we have a house that's burnt up, been burnt up. They burnt it, my wife and my husband was in the house one night, almost caught our house on fire, and everybody has been constantly dumped. It's a very bad light problem. If one of the kids in the neighborhood was to get hurt, it would be very bad, because I have brought it up several times to a couple people, and I'm just trying to get the house boarded up or tore down. It's bad, it's a corner house, it's right across the street from the park, you can't miss it. And the second thing I want to speak on is, a lot of us come down here to learn about City Council and what goes on down here. The main thing I have a problem with is, I have to ask for a sheet that tells us the dates. They used to be back there, they're not there, they're not downstairs, we just have one open elevator. How will anybody know what's the dates to come down here if they can't get a paper? I just want to know, like the simple question is, can somebody help you get the house boarded up or tore down? Because it's like everywhere over there, and the second thing I want to know is, for all the newcomers coming on, like how when me and my husband first started down here, how can they get a paper to know what dates that actually happens to City Council meet on? Because it's only one, and it's over the elevator. You know, there's a lot of people that don't look over the elevator right there to see what's going on. This is a simple question, that's all I want to know, can y'all please do a paper, talk to everybody, to actually know? Because I have asked one last week.
Next speaker is James Moore.
Thanks for a second, Lord. Now, I hope you, I think we did a lot of telephone calls, looking at the city, and they will not make a difference. I just want to say back out to those followers, they once said that Jim Crow was a rule. Then they came back and said, Jim Crow is the law. Well, Jim Crow got changed, and it was because people stood up to him. They got tired of buying from the back of the restaurant with their money. They got tired, uh, uh, of saying white students, elder students, they got tired of sitting at the back of the bus. That was Jim Crow. Well, we're tired of y'all trying to bring Jim Crow on the thing. Jim Crow is in the past. I don't even know if it's still got a place to live, but we're just letting you know, it's about respect. Y'all, from Eric Ward's place, his words was that y'all have these wacky rules, these wacky rules that we used to think if you got put out on your first or your second warning, you could stay in your home. Now, they're just going downhill, and they fit elevator, and all the way into the sliding glass doors, and you look past the cameras on us. It sounds like Jim Crow. I just want to ask some questions, you're going to have to find out, for about four or five gentlemen that we got here, and I call peacekeepers, y'all, they call them police. After when they call everybody out, do they go from the department line of full conference, and they come back up here, what is there to do? Well, why you calling people out of the sliding glass doors? I just want to remind the peacekeepers, that their cars are still parked, they go in, and we buy the gates. They can one step, four mile, they can go and control the city, and make this place as I tell you, safe as close. Y'all have to believe it.
Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
All right. So I'm sure most of you guys watched the interview with Mayor Smeely and the Volkens.
Smeely, he called him Smeely.
The only thing that was missing was the fourth of the month, of finding you guys there. Those are cool. Councilman Moshe, I did exactly what he said, uh, for last week, to go back and view the video, and, uh, the video says you're alive, you were alive yesterday, you were alive. I'm afraid that he tried to get them to remove me away from you. So, that being said, the credibility is horrible right now, and it looks like we need to see a doctor, because he got bad taste of lies. days of L I C.
L I C?
So, as I try to get myself more activated, what's going on around here? I downloaded a copy of the charter. I would have all, you know, I would be a rock. And just in two days of normal charter, I've come up with six charter violations that I can see right now, plain and bare. Okay? One of them is involving Councilwoman Priestley, Councilwoman Shutt, and someone from Missouri. And that is, you guys haven't assigned somebody to the DNA board yet. I know it's true, because obviously I have been chatting with four of them. Because without the DNA board being able to get a name, obviously they can't take action. So if you don't find somebody to hold, they can't do it. They probably had a meeting last night. The last minute before that was in February. But that same thing, February. Okay? Now, who's in charge of the DNA, the absence of accountability board? Who moves on responsibility? I would think this is the council. I don't know yet. I haven't made that far. I want to talk about Michael Plack last week. I guarantee you, Councilwoman Lewis did not say Michael Plack's name. She said a man in a blue shirt. She said that a few times. And Councilwoman Shutt said.
Gaslight. It's called gaslighting.
Oh, Michael Plack? Okay, there's the first warning. The guy in front of him stood up and said, it was me. But you still gave him a warning. Trying to get him out of here. Trying to shut him off. And the safety plan, I still have to get off the safety plan.
The next speaker is Taylor Sampson.
Taylor Sampson, resident of the eighth ward. I came across this excerpt from the book Life is a Radical, I Do, and I thought it applied to Flint and also everything I'm seeing across the country right now. This chapter said, "They will call you violent. If your tactics disrupt the order of things under capitalism, you may well be accused of violence." Because violence is an elastic term often deployed to vilify people who threaten the status quo. Conditions that the state characterizes as peaceful are in reality quite violent. Even as people exercise and experience the violence of poverty, the torture of imprisonment, the brutality of policing, the denial of healthcare, and many other violent functions of this system, we are told we are expecting and experiencing peace so long as everyone is cooperating. When state actors refer to peace, they are really talking about order. And when they refer to peaceful protests, they are talking about cooperative protests that obediently stays within the lines drawn by the state. The more incoherent you are, the more you will be accused of aggression and violence. It is very important period that the state not be the arbiter of what violence means among people seeking justice. First of all, to all the media back here, Channel twelve, five, sixty-six, twenty-five, M Life, I got Michigan Public Radio back here. We are residents of this city, not protesters. But we are in these chambers. This is our chambers. We are residents. Quit saying we're protesters. We are here speaking and telling our truths because this is the people's chambers. I'm tired of hearing that narrative. And the mayor is inciting the violence here. He is the one that is repeatedly sticking the police on us. He is the one that is trying to cheat on people. He is the one that's on these principles, one, two, four, and seven what to do. We know you all have called the police multiple times. We've seen Ladel do it week after week. Quit playing these games with us. This is our lives that you're talking about. These are decisions you're making that are affecting us and everything we do. And every time they talk about us being violent, it has not been violence. We have been peaceful. We've been following the laws. The police started everything that Sunday and Monday last week. We cannot keep saying that. It's the truth. Everyone saw it. It's on the news everywhere. I'm tired of these lies. And then they go up there and have that conference with the pastors? Are you kidding me? Now you're going to use some clergy against the people? That's disgusting. That's disgusting. We are the ones that are supposed to be getting all these benefits from all this money. The capital here is the money. They're doing everything they're doing because they're trying to hide what's going on. If they were innocent, none of this would be happening. Innocent people love that. See, I'm just looking at you. That is appreciate. No smile or smirk on your face. Maybe you threw up a little bit since last week when I was up here. I'm tired of it. What do you not understand? We're frustrated because our lives are being affected by every decision you make. You can't silence us.
Take take for mayor.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Hello, this is, um, flipping tables. That's my table. Matthew, what is it? Matthew four A. Matthew four A. What I saw yesterday at the press conference, I saw the devil tempting the Jesus, representative of Jesus' presence.
Fake name.
And, but that was told Jesus was, I would give you the kingdom of this world if you bow down and worship me. Chris Martin and Metta group, I just boop this. At this time, at this press conference, you want to say you're talking about meaning. But the first thing that exited Mount is, we need them to vote on the new resolution. Because Chris Martin just run in Congress. Because Chris Martin's a carer. It's said that we have Jews that are going to end up planting their third pieces of silver under the little trees that Jews planted. When we speak about council, we have to speak about the good names too. Because it's not all council. This is fourth, third floor, second floor, fourth floor, and seventh floor. The other ones have been trying to get our roof, trying to get twenty-four hundred dollars out to the public. The other ones have been lining pockets. Look at the devil. The devil back in here looking like raggedy ann. Y'all, she got a new hair. She got a new wig. She got brand new privacy fence. Her dog way is done. And then you still picking with your legacy, Miss Go. You don't even say good names to it. I said it when I saw the upper four made amendments to this budget to take the mayor's office budget down one point five to five hundred thousand. So don't say that the government isn't doing their job. They didn't make five hundred thirteen million dollars instead of four million dollars. How can I do a budget when the budget isn't right? I want to do a budget when the administration comes up here and don't have any information. Listen, girl, how much money is in the queue for all the lawsuits that's happening? Because I just got my case dismissed when they arrested me out of the hallway. You and I both know that's against the law or against our rights for them to arrest us in that hallway. Why do y'all keep on adding on to lawsuits? Because mine is beyond that shit, baby.
The next speaker is Mari Fox.
Candace, um, my name, you said that during the altercation, you were made in your seat, ready to do your job. So somebody went back and looked. Is this your sex? You're in there in your seat. So who exactly is spreading misinformation? Well, now, my name is Mari. Let me repeat myself and make it clear. My name is Mari, M-A-R-I. I would appreciate it if you called me Mari next time you want to try to call me out and kick me out of council, scream me out, little miss Lynn, in a bitter, nasty, condescending tone. All that proves we both know my nickname holds power. It's really not a good looking minor's or council meetings. I also saw that hairband said she follow me on I T. The session was shit. People are trying to cause chaos for likes and views on social media. I have always used social media to spread awareness about what happens to the residents of Flint. But residents who that are dealing with, and I have zero plans to stop it. But let's make this clear. I am not the woman that's going to stand at challenge plans and respect by you. You clearly have zero respect for me. I will meet you with this exact same energy you give me. And this is the same exact way residents of Flint feel. You'd love to antagonize us because you can't govern us like children, but the minute we call you out and maybe back this energy, you weaponize the police against the people. We barely have enough police on the streets. They have a little crime. They play TV during Christmas by having four, six officers in the team. They're every single game. Why? Why not move some of those officers out? We're covering people. Today, it took over two and a half hours to respond after a given officer missing fifteen year old potentially being killed by officers. Thankfully, we were able to call U of M, U of M Police, our officers, I'll see you in five minutes. How can you say county leadership is committed to the residents of Flint when you continue to sit up there and ignore the residents' concerns? Look down, you look down at your phone or roll your eyes when we are speaking. How can you be committed to the residents of Flint when you continue to ignore anyone on the council that disagrees with you? How can you be committed to residents of Flint and continue to be quiet in this chaos where thousands of citizens are getting done? Flint needs account for about twenty-five percent of residents in the city of Flint. While summer jobs for a hundred people in the city of Flint is a good start. What about the other twenty thousand or so that's left home? What do you have to offer them? We all know that these summer jobs won't do anything to stop the crime of Flint. Those calling the community have yet to set off some of their own churches to speak to the youth of, to find out what the problem is. We need so much more than summer jobs and leadership. And leadership that seems clueless somehow to actually help. So once again, please, 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 please get your S H I T together. Thank you.
My name is Kealan Kopee. I am twelve years old and my little sister. Monday was my very first home sweetie. And after seeing how most of you behave like children, I want to go over some of the names we learned way back in elementary school. One, treat others the way you would like to be treated. Two, when someone is speaking, listen to them and give them your full attention. Three, your tone means just as much as what you're trying to say. Four, don't tell lies. I am a Flint kid that works for my sister to help thousands of Flint kids every school year. The kids here in Flint are strong, but have been through so much trauma between the water crisis, the pandemic, and the crime that is out of control in our community. So many of the kids are struggling with basic necessities like food, clothing, and school supplies. The kids here need one program in place to make sure that they have their basic needs met. We need programs that help kids on all levels, starting in the schools, after school, on the weekends, and during summer break. What happened to those summer jobs? And those hundred kids are right back where they started. Please stop acting like children and start thinking about the children of Flint.
The next speaker is LaDre Redd.
LaDre.
Hi, my name is LaDre Redd, first ward. I'm just here to speak on that conference. And this is how I feel as a resident. I'm not a writer. I am a resident. I am a tax paying resident. I am a homeowner resident in City of Flint. So we do have a right to watch and use those bills that we pay for, and those five bucks that we pay for. And the day it came, how the summer passed, where was they at when the old people, when they started to do this? Where are they at? These students are controlled. They are unhinged. Where are they at? Where are they at? Will we suffer through this water crisis? Where are they at? And how come every time they brought their servants up down here, they locked themselves up in that room and couldn't talk about what was going on? We don't know that in the council. We tired of this. We are not writers. We are citizens of Flint. And we are fed up to here. It's an abhorrent point. I'm just looking at, my family, myself have lost six family members fighting the last three years to gun violence. Young and to like from ages thirteen to like twenty-five. That ten year old brother got shot along that corner, that was my cousin. Not only after she got shot, but her cousin got killed. Y'all don't understand because y'all is not living. Them pastors do not live here. Quit bringing their people that don't speak their language. They come with the goodness going on. They're putting on a lot of shit. I've been staying at home because I can't be here. I'm just asking, where's these two servant pastors with these mothers who work about the toxins on their day? And what is this for? Where are you the servant pastor? Why haven't they been here to stand up with us? Where is the servant pastor? As far as y'all is not going to talk to violence in this shit. You're going to go down and have a nerve to stand up and tell us about a back to the bricks. Don't nobody care about back to the bricks. I'm a servant sleeping at night and had this little puppy in his foot bed like nine in ten o'clock whenever you had downtime. Doing back to bricks? Why ain't that for the season period? You got these little humans that's running around the mess. Pull them over. They act like they stuttering. And that means little folks running down hiding in their corners. They run around in groups. If you want to be all the brats, I'm with you. When you see a walking around with a mess, don't pull them over. Hit them up. Jump them by the car. Because I'm sick. I can't sleep at night. If you understand what I'm saying. I'm just trying to stop it. I'm just saying. I don't care about your budget. We in the same crack in this that the state level is. We don't care if you say that. We already in a tighter situation. We already on our numbers. They already bleeding. We don't care. I tell y'all, I would rather sit in the bottom before that bucket gets back.
The next speaker is Beverly Mae Lee Paul.
Read you a speech, girl. She gonna read speeches, remember?
My name is Beverly Mae Lee Paul. I am a resident. I'm not doing a lot. My name is that. You got first ward, second ward, fourth ward, seventh ward, all of you lot. Then you want to do a right hand person. If I'm not mistaken, Jared did not show you this picture. You and Lea about Saginaw in Philadelphia. Why Ms. Righty is saying she cleaning that up? No, she didn't. Mr. Brown cleaned that up. And I spoke to him. He went and swept up the, uh, the glass and the lamp thing. She ain't cleaning up nothing. So you get another person in that third, fourth seat. Back here, she's going to be a liar just like you are. We need to stop this lying and get on with it. The thousands of a budget, it ain't a budget. It ain't that. And you, and you won't know it ain't that. You, you say you finance. And you haven't looked at the paperwork in four months. Ain't nothing financing about you. You're lying.
And math ain't mathin'.
At all. At all. You guys won't have to wake up, smell the coffee, because it's stinking. And I don't care. We got these preachers. You got all the preachers out. Where is the preachers one we need? I remember a time when you had Metropolitan Pastor, Corner. You had Bishop Otis Floyd. You had Granville Smith. You had Foss Avenue, Aldrich. They would have came up here and turned this council out.
Wouldn't even be like.
You take it long enough, you don't know it. But if you ain't lived here long enough, you don't know it. There's never would've been a time that this stuff that's going on right here.
Right.
Pulling people out of their cars.
Right.
Almost ran his foot over.
Yep.
He ain't even right. I have to take him to a psychiatrist. I never had to take my husband to a doctor, psychiatrist, or anything. Now he's seeing everybody. But you guys can hold your head down, they don't know nothing, you, oh, I don't know what I'm saying.
God has mercy on the people.
It's so hard, don't really.
They gotta pay.
And like I said, Lea, I'm sorry for your grandmother, I pray for your family. But you know what, I pray for all you see for, all of you that's sick of you. And I ain't ashamed to say it, but God bless all the y'all, if you gonna wake up one day, have a blessed day.
Next speaker is Shalita Saverson.
Look, all the news meeting they got up.
How y'all doing? Last time y'all seen me, my, my name is Shalita, my name is Shalita, my name is Shalita. Last time my name up here, I was very, uh, angry since April fifteenth. Um, my eight year old has, little miss Flint has already let us know a fifteen year old is being held hostage, and we didn't get any type of police relief. My eight year old was held hostage for over twenty-one days. But yet, when we hold a peaceful protest on a Sunday, God's Day, not only do we get the police that are in keeping traffic driving at speeds unfathomable for the turning lane, which not even a light for you to drive in, but they are snatching elderly people out of cars. Not only that, but a friend of mine that I know very well, because he likes to cuddle at nights, yeah, he's a police officer, peace officer, yeah, that received a phone call from a psychiatrist that said that we had multiple guns up here and we were threatening her during the chambers of money. I would like to know, who had done, all the people that were recording, if anybody, please, send me the footage of anybody that was up here in these chambers, uh, certain residents of Flint, Michigan, about our money and threatening us going, and about how we are living in this city. Where anybody was doing that? I've seen several residents get assaulted by officers. I've seen council members inciting the police to come and start a riot. I've seen multiple people trying to palm me down after someone up there allegedly said that I was being, um, what is the word that they use? I can't even think right now.
Decor.
Disorderly.
You may.
But how am I being disorderly when a officer, a police officer of your chambers walked up to a resident and asked the resident, you know her better than me, can you help me get her out of here? And the moment that he got me tied, is the moment that y'all, Flint police, y'all thugs, y'all gang for new and the minions. First, Second, Fourth, Seventh Ward, call the police and think that we gonna stand up? No, we gonna stand up, and we are ready for whatever it is, because you guys have had us in survival mode too long. And we have nothing to do, we don't have food, we don't have grocery stores, our roads feel like worse than roller coasters, ride down to the shopping, struts, everything else. We can't get the police to come for a bull, a kill goer coming up Door Highway, ordering a group, and taking out two buildings. But yeah, we got fifty police officers ready because the circus decided to call for minions and have all that in the chambers.
Next speaker is Rashawn Johnson.
My name is Rashawn Johnson, and I am a writing today for Flint Third Ward. At our campaign kickoff last night, something became very clear. Even if the board are ready for change, and that change stopped the bad. So over the next few weeks, I will be talking about things that can guide my campaign, my life. Service, integrity, and community. Tonight, I just want to speak briefly about what those values mean to me, and what it can mean to Flint. Summer screen showing up, my just talking, I, I have driven buses in the city.
Please respect each individual public's time and space.
I have been driving buses in the city, cleaning up light, knocking on doors, that help our city. I suffer because I care, it's that simple. Integrity, integrity means torn, much brighter, even when nobody blocks, it means put people over hot ticket. It's fair enough when you're out, and even if you're standing alone. And community, community, that's everything. Community is the block you live on, the neighbors who check in, check in. In the third ward, we know how to look out for each other. We have to. These guys are just not worth the needle, their way of life. They're a bunch of idiots in the big hall that rock and roll your trust in hope. Next time I talk, make my service, what it means to leave my voice. But tonight, I would stand with, I did call Lambang. I called Lambang, stayed on Lambang, uh, Philadelphia, San Antonio. I talked to, uh, Lambang Mike about a building, that was on the corner of Saginaw and Philadelphia. Not only that, I did several cleanups in the area. One on Philadelphia, uh, resident called, and actually it was blighted behind her house. Their people had, through common room, she groups, blocks.
Niggas ain't got no common room.
I came in, got it done, no problem, this and my family, not a queer, we are so grateful and the community. Anything that the residents calling for me to do, I am happy to assist you and all, and all and most. So if you have any problem in your area, in the third ward, anywhere, you can contact me and me give it part time, and I will help you get the job done. That's for Flint first.
You can't, it's, where? He hell he is, big as hell. That's what I said, caution big as hell. Big ass pile of shit. And it smelled, ooh.
Please speak into the mic, you're facing the audience and you are addressing us.
I thank all of the, uh, speakers that came up here, young ones who got that yellow in the pack, really appreciate you all. I thank you very much, Julie. You know, just Julie and, and how excellent of you. You know.
You were raised in the third ward.
You know, because if it wasn't for the accident, you would be exurgent, you know what I'm saying? You wouldn't, you wouldn't tell me how I could, you know, I got a face, and how I got stuck. You know what I'm saying? If I wanna turn around, I can't back into the, the young people who have my back, you know, I thank them. You don't have my back.
Showed up at all.
You know what I'm saying? You don't have my back. And the reason why I said that is because I have a story, I'm gonna tell you that story, and a guy came up to me, you know? And, uh, he said that, he said something so powerful to me. He said, if somebody came up here right now, and I told you go into the store, get out of the way, I got your back, I got your back. You know what I'm saying? And I was talking about that, you know, from that something that's invisible when you get pulled out of the car, you know what I'm saying? For them like, right, crying, you know, scared to death, you know what I'm saying? I just say, thank you, thank you all. Young people, thank you, why, thank you, you know what I'm saying? Thank you. You know, that's all I got to say.
Next speaker is Ashante Worchison.
I heard Ashante bring it on.
Ashante Worchison.
Look, you ain't got this shit stuck in my head, tell I'm wearing a cowl, see? I'm about to sing you this shit.
The individual council member's response should have been a few minutes. Sorry, I would like to.
My name is Jeffrey, City Attorney. City Attorney is the, um, position of Ambassador and official city position.
Nope.
No. The show ain't in the choppin', the choppin'.
She don't know.
It's, it's not in the choppin'.
So the Third Ward Ambassador is not a very commissioned position out of the charter.
We knew it.
So it's not official for the city.
We knew it.
The Third Ward Ambassador does not have an official position for the city.
Oops.
Don't make this.
Oops. You know they make they own rules.
The Third Ward, uh, New Air Force Ambassador is continuing to use city resources in campus as a charter.
Alright, fight.
That's his charter.
Fight for mayor.
The Third is the ambassador position and illegal position. It doesn't matter if you have the ability to create a position, because if so, that's a, that is a legal reason to charter, using, um, this is the same reason why I changed.
That's why the budget open.
And, and do a standing speech back during public hours.
So it sounds like you're asking multiple questions.
Well, answer all of them.
Third Ward are looking into anyone making, um, campaign.
That ain't what he asked.
Statements from the community. So that is something that is under research period. The second part you have.
Shut it down.
Whether or not city resources are being used, I don't know that. So you can. What city resources?
We need receipts.
Fight says, no problem, no problem, I need receipts.
Go ahead, listen to her. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first I would like to thank all of the residents, thank you for being engaged in the process, thank you for being here. Taking time out of your busy schedule to, uh, continue to be present.
Bye-bye.
In your chambers. Um, I hope that I always have a day. I hope that I sit here, we have youth in the house. Um, coming up to, to speak to the council, and I just thank you two for coming. Uh, wow, very, very insightful, and thank you. Thank you, um, Reverend, um, Matthew Smith, thank you for being here. What a powerful prayer, and what a powerful ma, uh, message that, that you, um, stood here and rendered to us. Thank you so much for being here, and I do want to speak to you after, after this. Um, residents, all I gotta say is continue to stand up.
That's right.
It's about things, it's about things going on in this city, and when I tell you it's layers and layers and layers of stuff.
We know.
I just need you guys to continue the fight. Continue the fight. And remember, this is your chambers. Do not be afraid to come in here and voice your opinions, your concerns, and your needs, and that poem will live. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, I would say thank you to each and every one of you for coming here, and I wish you to pay attention when you step to the podium in school. That's the release we should all be giving.
That's right.
Sadly, um, Reverend Claude Smith, um, I enjoyed the conversation with you, Reverend, um, Powell. Thank you for all of us in letter, because I made sure I responded, you are a part of our community. When I come to that podium, thank you for that, and I hope that you'll continue to show up. Um, and to, um, LaDre Davis, I want you to understand since you decided to call my name, we should ignore you, because you be mild and wrong. I just want to say that we had two budgets, one was four point two, one was, with the negative, but definitely that was thirteen point four. We don't have liability, and if you read the chart, we don't direct to see a vote in there, we see a call. We can't go to their office and directly tell them to give us the document. When we got here tonight, because you simply don't know, you loud and wrong.
You can point it.
We just have, uh, we give them, or.
You can point it.
We have this, please.
Please, it's what?
We just have a document here tonight, this is one hundred and thirty-two pages, that's fine item. And so when you don't understand these things, and you step to that podium to call it up, it's not the same if you were once, once was the council. It has changed. And you need to understand that, and I want you to have good information, factual information. I want you to be right on the right side, unlike when you were here, kind of, you're tethering. So I want you to understand that. So, and you said, thank you for coming here, because we aspire, you give us energy, and I appreciate that. Because it takes courage to step up with your truth, okay?
First of all, I just want to say, thank you, former councilman LaDre Davis. Wow. You brought up a important point, our job is to budget, and we should have all the elections submitted for the presidency, and we have to work on it. It's not fair, it's not fair to say that we have an issue with the budget and not have a proper relationship, so I just understand that. But thank you for highlighting that, and one of the three things that we have to do, the first thing is our budget, ordinances, and advocate for residents. Those are the three things that we're permitted to do here. So, we have to give, fulfill that part. Next, um, that's Lloyd, um, for two, this is my district, so I've never heard of this issue, so I will be sure to look into it. Um, next, Mr. Wood, uh, thank you so much for being here, taking the time to take a look at the charter. It's important for us to follow the charter and the rules. So, continue to call out, raise your hands, that's your right, that's our job to hold it. Thank you for that. And then, um, you also spoke about the public safety plan. You can feel free to reach out to me now, I provided for you. Okay? And then, um, we also have, um, this community, I understand that sometimes you are a candidate for a seat, so I would encourage you to submit your change. Because if one of your future seats, we encourage you to get a walk. because if you want to be your future seat, we encourage you to get involved in the process. Because this is a process. So, um, again, um, and thank you, Mr. Wood.
He can't go get in that process now.
My driveway, my fence, everything else, that's very stock record, but that's what you do. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, the process. She not getting in that process.
Madam Chair, yeah, I would like to, once again, reiterate, when y'all pull up the video, instead of trying to find steel phones that were clear near here, I have no reason to call the police. But please, we're already here. You even showed a picture that testified that you could go through saying. The police were already fully in front of me on that picture. So, like I said, I did call them, didn't have a reason to call them. If I wanted to call them and I did call them, I would say I called them. I had no reason to call them because they were all ready here. Another thing, I want you to highlight the fact that earlier today, we had an opportunity to go to the Chamber Luncheon and, um, there was a contest that happened. There were several entrepreneurs, local entrepreneurs, with Steve funding for some of the work that they're doing here in Anne Flin. So, congratulations to Mr. Roy Stevens because I believe he was the winner of the five thousand dollar reward so that he can continue, um, providing safe, healthy food choices and continue teaching youth how to, um, garden and do things that will continue to give them access to healthy food options. And finally, you tell that officer that said I said that to come forward. They'll, no problem, and we'll all, we all good. Because like I said, nobody's been calling police. They were already here. And when you all are ready, this is not a back and forth, and when you all are ready to watch that full video, post that full video online, then we can have a conversation. But until then, um, as I said, I did not call the police. I have a reason to. When all of that stuff happened, I was sitting in my seat. Sitting right in my seat. So, all you had to do was look at the video and listen to that. Um, Madam Chair?
Yes. I am, I was just going to address it.
No, you would.
Number one, um, man in the front row, you cannot hold that like that. You must take it off or you must go in the back. That's per resolution that we passed. Okay? Um, and number two, please be respectful. I, I'm going to start picking out order shortly. If you guys cannot be respectful of our time and our addressing your concerns, go ahead, you got a second, second. Oh, you, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And so, again, congratulations to everyone that participated in the contest at the Chamber Luncheon. And again, congratulations to Roy Stevens. And I believe his program is called Dreams. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to take my time. Um, Mr. Davis, in order to, for someone to be able to do a budget, they must be present during budget hearings. And this report that they said they just got today, if they had been at every budget hearing, they would have had this because it was given to us
Email.
...for every department during every budget hearing. This exact same report.
Um, for the person who wanted to know how to find out where the city council meetings are, they're posted online on the City of Flint. Go under the government, city council page, and the listing of all the meetings and committees are there. Um, also, rule twenty-nine point two, that a member of the public wishes to address the city council or its committees. They may do so during the time designated for public council. And he's addressing us, not the public. All right, if that's everything I need to say, so
You always trying to be somebody's bear mom.
Presentation for the President's legislature, Bill O'Conne. This presentation is regarding fiscal year 2026 city of Flint budget.
You don't know nothing, you don't know.
I want to know.
This is So, we have
We got some help. None of them don't ever know shit. You come blame it on kids.
This presentation was after request by myself, um, her city clerk, her city adjutor. So, this wasn't at the budget hearings. This presentation was
Got a laptop today, y'all. He might know a little something.
This is an explanation. Mr. Warren, whenever you're ready.
We don't know when you're ready. We don't know when you're ready. Yeah, I don't know where you're going today, don't you?
Mr. Warren, who indicated this, you were reaching us in the slide that
Yes. First slide shows the most permanent for prior years, the last seven years, the residents and veterans. The, uh, blue lines will see, the residents support us.
Team will upgrade it on the wigs.
Fourth line
Team will upgrade it on the wigs.
Incorporation for the veterans and the former. And as we'll see then, for the last seven years, the residents have always been less than the veterans. That's because of the way city budgets, their personnel costs. Uh, they have a certain debt, uh, a budget for all employees to be there, um, from first day to last day. And we know that's not going to be able to do that. It's a budget for six hundred positions and we have, uh, five hundred visiting employees. That results in a savings to the city. And you'll notice that the last couple years, with that, uh, it's reduced down, it's kind of made a little more small. Uh, there are some issues that, uh, the prepared budget, the base budget, uh, what information you know at the time. Budget was submitted on March third and there was a lot of information that we don't today that we did not know from March third because it just wasn't available. Uh, for example, uh, March third, we did not go further to have a treaty contract, uh, with this report on provisional law acts. Since that, uh, it has been signed that we got the this report.
Um, because we're just getting this and that spring's not changing. So, uh
I'll, I'll email it to the doc.
Yeah, we can not bring it up. We said, we're just getting out of the dinner floor. Well, it's still you in the chair. I'm not done. Thank you. We'll email it.
Why she gonna ask her father?
That was also on the list. That was Go ahead, go ahead, we'll get it, we'll get it printed out.
Okay, okay, it's about, uh, the first call, we're showing the savings of the second, uh, plus the four of the savings. Uh, the second thing is, the whole budget, they offered two brands and they not go further on
No, no, they didn't want him marching.
Since that, uh, the budget that we are, they better receive all those brands.
I think, well, it is, but the point I'm asking is We got over twenty-some million dollars in funds.
Okay, the first call is the same issue we had.
Did you say the same?
Fun bounce, they don't go to Mexico. Fun bounce stays there to balance the budget. Everyone in this economy has that. That's only made, the fun bounce is only made
Okay, so, so it's seven hundred plus seventy-three, is the two thousand, two million worth of it? Plus fifteen, the working vice.
Okay, they just, we have received both those brands. We're going to receive, uh, most of that seventy million dollars. This is what the residents, the residents, to, and hopefully have, we have all the prepared budget. We, the prepared budget, finally, the information that we all, not in our best guess or our, uh, we used to have things that we don't know about, we don't, and Brad wasn't, uh, in the revenue. Next, uh, the U N B E tax revenue for this fiscal year, we've budgeted one point five million dollars as a daily wage, more than we had budgeted for this year, twenty-five. The only thing after is the revised our numbers for F one, twenty-six and stuff like that. We're likely to receive, at least that, we're also likely to receive, we're also likely to receive additional past million dollars to welcome to.
Well, we can have the budget.
Next, we're working on state of Michigan to, uh, uh, let them take over our, their foundation of the D F tax. First step is let's find that's our data to work with their data and they have made that work. They've also have identified a number of taxpayers that live in the city, that pay the state subsidies, take the tax, but did not pay, um, city income tax. The state is estimating that, uh, we've budgeted this whole two point two million dollars from the people that have babies. Sorry, you can't, the state's going to be sending letters out, we also have to start collecting much boxes to roll, to save some money for that. The big news, the last one is not what the county allow, but they're also going to decide to opt for country taxes with the current, the upcoming fiscal year for the, they will, they're allowing that taxes funded. I won't put in a half million dollars, but I am sure that's a little desperate. Uh, once they start funding that, that's likely to well above that. Uh, that's your possible limit, what, uh, most of the, uh, uh, and the biggest, probably, that we're saying to the city council, we have natural lives. Uh, or I heard, heard of the big council, is we also have some possible personal, uh, for big family life. We don't have all those last two. First of all, I am more than, uh, the difference between our residents and vets. Both that, I'm sure, certainly, if there were, next year, who is the added with the fund out, what is that, what else?
Request for a name. Did I just understand that the last two are in fact savings or proposal, or they could be savings?
Last comment, uh, proposals, that's, that's the savings, we're cut those. But, uh, our first purpose would be not to make those cuts, but our first question would be, uh, not to ask for them. It does sound possible. Uh, if you're cutting, you don't need those, uh, if you want to have a budget, ask for the fund out.
Madam Chair, speaking to you as a speaker. Again, my question is, are those actual savings or are those projected savings?
Well, the first four, also actually, uh, the last two, last two, they, they could be actual savings,
but they're not actually yet.
They're not actually yet.
Because it's my understanding that the first call was actual savings.
The first call is estimate, but what, if there's a bunch of, if you're not, you don't put those taxes for those twice, you won't put two savings. If we, uh, that wasn't, that's, we're admitting, both without the savings and we're still That's what my, my, uh, special
That's like the dishonest part. When it was here, they still Yeah, but I'm saying, when you got a C F O, like right now, who don't have that?
Uh, Paul, please, because I don't think you understood that.
Uh, both are actual savings.
But let's, 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 there is a
Nine hundred and thirty-three thousand is actually, if you're If we made the cost, that is actually, that's what you're trying to do. But our actual cost, if we decide or if you actually decide
But you got right here. You put a budget together, see a shape, it's just a budget. Say, this the budget, we send it to the help and then you put your word on there. He was accepting the budget.
We're going to have the presentation and then we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll have dialogue.
Of course, we get your brief.
If they have pulled thirty minutes
I don't come up with that same You go with your brief, but I don't get brief.
As soon as you, as soon as you email it, it's enough.
No, they don't. It's more difficult to remember where to go back. They don't, they don't have one.
Uh, Phil, Paul, can you read down that presentation so that he
So, it's a lot of this.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, thank you. Last question, if we have about a hard budget, uh, for appropriations. Twenty twenty-four, we moved forty-two million dollars into the federal fund. We appropriate millions of dollars and expect some of the dollars. In twenty twenty-five, we still have some of the appropriate dollars, we probably have twenty-one, and we are still, we're going to, with this paper, still going to have some of those dollars in twenty twenty-six, that we weren't repaying in twenty twenty-five. If we don't want those programs to stop and continue to, we have to reappropriate those dollars, uh, unless they'll, they'll stop with these, and that's, uh, that's the nine million dollars that, uh, was just being presented by the drug world and what was at the Russell Awards. What's my, I have a question.
I, I, my People in the back, we are having trouble hearing and understanding what's being said. If you want to have a conversation, please take it down farther in the hall so it's not echoing on the hall. Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the purpose of the nine million dollars is, it's money that the city council approved in twenty twenty-five. And we did not want, uh, the projects to stop at this fiscal year. We want to continue. The approved money for sidewalk replacement and for, uh, free removal. Those programs won't, uh, be completed if we don't reappropriate the dollars. And that's what the purpose was. Otherwise, they will stop for three, four days. That, that's my explanation. Allah, let us all pray, I think we are, this too, maybe.
Should be on that to us and then now we can go. Go ahead, break it up. So, this is the, this is four. Because we don't have, I was the captain, you're actually, I was, but where's our, what's our entry fund you're updating?
Our entry fund payment for this fiscal year is twenty million dollars. For our entry payment for F one twenty-five is twenty million dollars and it will be twenty million dollars for twenty twenty-six. It also will just be the same amount for twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so for twenty-five, six, and seven, it's going to be twenty million?
Yes.
Okay, is that an actual?
That, that is, uh, financial, although the, uh, twenty twenty-seven is, it would have, that's very reliable.
Okay, and what, how much is that amount?
I wouldn't dare.
Uh, that's from, uh, every, uh, where they have, uh, Hawaii, it's a tradition there. So, all, all the funds are
I gotta get this. I know.
You want to pass some now?
So, we have gone to make this statement because you're going to put your budget for the next
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Now, that's really, because we have seen the hundred and seven million, we need to see, we were supposed to see fifty million. You never found out, fifty million?
Okay, uh, we received a payment of a hundred and seventy million, that was correct, all these were correctly converted. They did not, I'm going to say, we didn't see it at all on our bank account, correctly converted. Uh, we had a hundred and seventy million dollars, then we had a two million dollar, uh, then we had one that was for ten million which is based on, uh, the old app, our old platform. our OHEP liability. And then give plus, they gave us through, uh, excesses instead, which is fine. Uh, and then we have another one that is pending that will likely get in ours possibly a lot for 27 million dollars.
For 27 million?
Yes.
And where's that coming from?
That's come from state officials.
So it's all this, you don't get 27 million? How early do you want me to do?
Yeah, the 27 million is, uh, for sure. We just know what's happening, what's going to get at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Jared, see, we'll be.
I want you to go back to the screen that had the problems. Understanding and clarify, clarify.
Maybe just for.
Yes, I agree, says without a judgment.
Let him burn your ice crystal tree. He gonna stand up there? I got some pizzas.
I'm all right. Yeah, I do. What's up? How y'all doing, family? I just got back from this town. I'm not out. I'm tired.
Oh, they, they pizzas they hire. Give them pizza, take your home for later.
I got pizzas at home. Got them on. One pizza's kind of, it's not very water. I'm stressed.
Because if I, if I watch it, I'm getting $5 out of it. The $5 you asked for. What? Oh, okay.
They gonna interview y'all?
They going, they going to interview the devils. They're, the city able to give you one minute. And some of the people. I got a car, I'm good, you can use some money.
Hello, America. I'm America, don't worry. What's up, from that city hall? As you will see, what's happening in this thing about, this is the whole view. You got some financial stuff. But Queen of the Sea Book is in the background. Back there, she's a long hair devil. He almost had a crapper on her neck like a dead, hot and dry. But Queen of the Sea Book ain't going for that. She's like, like, she has another queen right here. She know what's really happening to you. Oh, yeah, like I said, that Mr. Boy with that, a stutterer, a stutterer, stutterer talk. And it, and I'm making up laws as he goes, call, call. Fake losers, they pass that fake losers law. The losers law, if you lost, then forget the laws of that. I ask you, America, stay tuned in. G R L, look at about the ass, the one.
Hey, fam, I got a cutoff, I'll be right back.